Good evening, Chair. Calls to order legislative session day twenty-five dash zero seventeen. I would ask you to join us in standing for the pledge followed by the opening prayer by Councilwoman Imhoff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here tonight. Please help us guide this coun- please help guide this council and our advocate citizens as we work to make the best decisions for our county. Please also guide and protect our first responders and the men and women serving in the armed forces as they work to protect our community, nation, and allies. Please help see those of our neighbors who are struggling with silent battles. Help us provide chivalry to our fellow man and help us all get home safely tonight. Amen.
Agenda number four, presentation of proclamations, we have none. Five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations, we have none. Six, special presentations. This evening, council, we're honored to have representing the Aberdeen Proving Ground for their annual update is Major General Ternetti, also Colonel Mundwell, Garrison Commander, and Sergeant Major High. Gentlemen. Thank you for coming tonight. I know you have a tremendously busy schedule and welcome to Hartford County again and whenever you're ready, sir.
Thank you, it's nice to see you again. Happy birthday and the next day.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council members, members of the public, and those who are joining us virtually today. It is a privilege to be here with you this evening and thank you for having us. For those who haven't had the pleasure to meet, I'm Major General Jim Ternetti and like those who came before me, I serve a dual role at Aberdeen Proving Ground. I serve as both the Communications Electronics Commander and the Senior Commander for Aberdeen Proving Town. Tonight with me is Command Sergeant Major Jay High to my left and Colonel Phil Mundwell, who is our Garrison Commander. As the Senior Commander, we represent an incredible installation, the dedicated people in vital missions and cutting-edge capabilities that support our nation and prepare our warfighters for any battlefield. This unique perspective allows me to see both an immediate impact we have locally and the broader strategic importance of our work at APG. It's a connection I deeply value. I know you all see the strong and enduring partnerships between Aberdeen Proving Ground and the surrounding communities. These ties are essential to our mutual success. We share so much common ground, a commitment to economic stability, a dedication to a skilled workforce, and a desire to see the region thrive. We are all invested in the success of Hartford County. Tonight, I would like to talk about the Army's newest innovations that will affect APG, and importantly, how they will impact our community. I also want to talk about how we can navigate and trans- this transformation together. The world is changing rapidly and so must the Army. To maintain our edge on the battlefield, the Army is undertaking Transformation Initiative known as the Army Transformation Initiative, ATI. This infor- this transformation will ensure a leaner and more lethal force capable of facing any threat. Army leaders have started transformation with the transformation in contact. Efforts rapidly testing organizational change, integrating new technologies to improve how we fight, equip, and train with a strong commitment on continuous innovation and an investment on emerging technologies. From that, the Army Transformation Initiative will focus on three lines of effort. Delivering critical warfighting capabilities, optimizing force structure, and eliminating waste and obsolete programs. This transformation will naturally impact our workforce. We anticipate a shift in jobs and structures, both creating challenges and more importantly, opportunities to reskill our talented workforce. Modern warfare is increasingly data-centric and APG plays a pivotal role in developing and maintaining critical capabilities. Our expertise in data analytics, cybersecurity, information systems is essential to soldiers that they have the information they need to succeed. Recently, several executive orders, including a return-to-work mandate, potential force restructures, a hiring freeze, travel restrictions, have been implemented. We understand that these measures directly impact or have a direct impact on the local community and we are here to mitigate any of those negative effects. I want to address some of the specific local implications these have. First, to address the return-to-work mandate, I'm sure you've all noticed an increase in traffic and congestion during your morning commutes as our force returns to in-person operations. But this increase on the installation now has a fantastic opportunity for the small businesses around our installation. We're actively seeking small businesses, food trucks, and restaurateurs to provide more options for the twenty-eight thousand strong workforce that we have at APG. It's a great chance to support our local businesses and to enhance the quality of life for our APG community. We've also developed the MyArmyPost app, which is available on Apple and Android for download for the over eighty thousand people on our inst- that our installation serves. Mapper provides real-time information on gate traffic, amenity hours, installation updates, and more. It's a great way to stay informed and connected. Second, I would like to address the topic of our workforce reductions. I understand that the word reduction raises some concerns and I want to be as open as possible. As you've likely seen in the news, the Secretary of Defense outlined an eight percent adjustment to our entire force. At eight PG, we have over ninety tenants and eleven major subordinate commands, each of those with their own headquarters. And each organization will develop their own plan how to meet this guidance. We expect that the workforce transformation to unfold over the next several months and it already has started with some of our employees already leaving service. However, I want to emphasize our commitment to minimize involuntary separation. I'm hopeful we will not have a reduction in forces on the installation thanks to the attrition, the hiring freezes, and the strategic reorganizations that we've already completed. Voluntary departure programs like the Deferred Resignation Program and the Vera VSEP, the Voluntary Early Retirement Authority, and the Voluntary Separation Incentive payout. Again, I would like to reiterate that each organization on APG will have different requirements and implementation guidance that will reshape their workforce. I cannot provide a single holistic number for APG. But while our workforce and the capabilities may evolve, our commitment to providing groundbreaking solutions remains unchanged and our dedication, our dedicated workforce will remain at the heart of every mission. Some programs and capabilities may adopt to evolving requirements, but our commitments provide the best possible equipment and support to our soldiers remains our top priority. We are also investing heavily in our employees. For the past few years, we've created additional training in data science, data analytics, and change management to ensure our workforce has the skills that they will need on the evolving landscape. At CCOM alone, we've assisted fifteen employees in obtaining their master's degrees with another ten graduating this fall. We also have a hundred and forty employees that are currently enrolled at the Hartford Community College in the Data Science Training and Certification Program, as well as taking inter- external training for AI and machine learning. These opportunities will reshape the skills needed for our workforce, which will lead to new avenues in training, industry input, and partnerships with local educational institutions. We are grateful for our connections with Hartford Community College and our local schools, which allow us to partner and learn from each other. We are especially thankful for our relationship with Choppetown High School, where we have the P-Tech Program, Junior ROTC, and Homeland Security Programs. We see this as a chance to strengthen our ties with the community and ensure that our workforce is ready for the challenges of the future. All of these changes are ultimately designed to make us better for the warfighter. And here at APG, we offer vast capabilities that enable our warfighters and strengthen our nation. From the full C-five ISR lifecycle to research and development, experimentation, testing, and fielding. When a soldier dons new equipment, chances are it was developed, tested, and fielded right here at APG. And it's not just C-five ISR equipment. We also have a National Guard Aviation Unit, which has been assisting efforts throughout the country to help bring Americans to safety during emergencies. We also have at APG South, our chem bio community, who are leading the edge of developing a pocket-sized device to detect chemical agents in the field and to train the domestic teams for combat casualty care. This is what makes APG the home of innovation. All these very unique but significant achievements and the better- that better our soldiers and greatly contribute to the safety and security of our nation. So what can you, our community partners, do to help? I know that's the top question on your mind. First, please let me say that we have incredible partnerships with our EMS, fire, and police forces. We are deeply appreciative of your support recently to the rush fires that we experienced on our installation. And secondly, I'd ask you to continue to ask questions to hold us accountable and make sure that we're communicating with each other. We are committed to the ongoing transparency and communication with the council and the community and will provide regular updates to the progress of the Army Transformation Initiative and the impact on APG and the surrounding areas. And finally, we are committed to strengthening our community's ties. The Free State Academy, with its outstanding group of over sixty-five cadets, is eager to volunteer and serve. So I'd ask you to please reach out wherever you see a role for them. We'd also invite you to our celebration that is shared in the heritage for APG's Army Birthday, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of the Army coming up in just a few weeks. These events will showcase our workforce, their capabilities, and all that the Army is doing to transform for this nation. Our events are family-friendly and most of them will be open to the public. So please be sure to take one of the scheduled cards with you today. And of course, we are committed to investing in the next generation through supporting local education and workforce development. We appreciate the community's assistance in telling us how APG can continue to contribute into this effort through school talks, mentorship, and STEM programs, and more. Please reach out to my team for any opportunities that you may have. And we're asked to share a little bit about one of the, uh, one of the capabilities that are just the CCOM team has here. CCOM is a global, global command. And there are a lot of things that I don't think people realize that we do. And one of them is support to the DPAA. And Sergeant Major will share a little bit of that story with you.
Good evening, council. So the DPAA is the Defense POW and MIA Accountability Agency. It's headquartered at Hickam Airfield in Hawaii. One of the things that they do is they go out and recover the remains and bring our soldiers and service members home. Right now, there's approximately seventy thousand POWs and MIA that are still unaccounted for. And the DPAA actually has a lead on about thirty-eight thousand. So imagine the closure for a family and be able to bring their loved one home. Joe Ternetti and I were out there several weeks ago and I would tell you that it is a first-rate operation. And how CCOM supports that is how they go out and do investigations and then they do recovery of the remains. Our team provides communication for those in countries that really don't have a great infrastructure. So you think Vietnam, Cambodia, Laos, we've had, because it's a concerted humanitarian operation, we've con- they've conducted operations in China and had exchanges with North Korea. And so it's just an absolutely thing that we're a part of and one thing that we will absolutely continue to support in the future.
Thanks to you, Sam. So that closes out our time and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, General. Sergeant Major, thank you for that update because when we talked the other night, I was just so impressed. I had no idea that efforts like that were ongoing still today and the amount, you said thirty-eight thousand, that caught my attention. But, but first of all, I want to thank you, all three of you, for taking time to come, give us an update on what's going on at APG. Personally, I've had great pleasure of listening to General Crawford, General Taylor, General Kilgo, General Edmondson, and now yourself, General Ternetti. So as I said the other night, I just appreciate you taking the time to come. And you know, Hartford County is blessed to have the installation here, local, because whenever there's a downturn in the economy, we seem to fare better than other local jurisdictions because of all the jobs that you all create at the federal installation. So we appreciate that. We seem to bounce back quicker than some of the other local jurisdictions. We appreciate you being here. Yes, there might be more traffic on the road today, but it's absolutely a plus. So with that, I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. Ms. Imhoff, I'll start with you.
Good evening. I just want to thank all three of you for being here today. My husband is a civilian on base and his brother, my brother-in-law, is currently deployed. And it's from your guys' leadership that really makes a huge difference to both our household and my nieces at this time. But I just wanted to thank you guys for being here tonight.
Mr. Janjerden.
So, good evening, General. Thank you, thank you all for coming too. And I really want to thank you for mentioning Hartford Community College partnership that you have with them. I'm a graduate of Hartford Community College in Maryland, so I heard your, your, about how many people you have enrolled in that program. So we certainly appreciate that. And then also, I didn't realize how much you do with Choppetown High School and that program, so that's great. But I also heard one other thing and I don't know, but you're looking for food trucks and so forth to come on base, was that true?
We are.
Okay. I, I do know a lot of food trucks and you point me in the right direction. So I will definitely can reach out and get you a bunch of food trucks. I'm sure they have to get, you know, certified to come out there and everything. I, I know that Burger King is gone, you're getting a Dunkin' Donuts there. And I know right outside the gate that you just lost, um, Express.
It's mainly just Subway.
Yeah, maybe just Subway. Bush Mill Express, so I don't know what's going out there, but I do know a bunch of food trucks that I'll, I'll work on, certainly pass that on.
We appreciate that. We have seen an increase, so thanks to Colonel Mundwell and team for working that. But they're not there full-time, you know, they move around and they're only there certain days. So we, we have plenty of capacity for more food trucks.
Well, I, I'll work on that, be, be my pleasure. Thank you and thank you for coming.
Mr. Riley.
General, you got a good man working on that because food trucks happen to follow Tony around wherever he goes. I, I really want to thank all three of you for your service and from District D, if you'll spread that throughout the base, we really appreciate what you folks do over there, not only for our community, but also for our nation. Thank you.
Ms. Sallis.
Thank you. I'd like to also thank you for being here as well and thank you for your service and all that you do. Appreciate it very much. Thanks.
Mr. Bennett.
Hello. Good evening. It's good to be with you all. As everyone else said, thank you so much. I'm very lucky to have APG physically within my district. And so many people who serve through APG live in Havity Grace or live on base. And I just am very thankful to you all for opening your home and having my wife and I with you to get to know you as people. And I think that's something really important for all of us to remember is underneath the uniforms are people. People who laugh, people who hope, people who have families, and people who commit themselves to our community. So thank you all so much. And with that, you know, I want to make sure to give a special shout-out to our Garrison Commander, who I believe is in the midst of transition. And so we'll miss you very much, although all the dads who swim against you are very happy to see you leave. He's, he's very shy, but he's a very good swimmer. But, uh, so thank you all so much. With education connection in mind, a few weeks ago, we had uprooted Chesapeake here in honor of Military Child Month and we, you know, all wore purple in honor of military children. I think it'd be great, maybe next year, we can work together in partnership to do some programming around the month of the Military Child and celebrating all those kids who come to Hartford County for two years and then they're off to the next stop with their family. Because I just think what they do for our community as kids is so important to recognize and celebrate too.
Thank you, we look forward to that.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. And then I would be remiss if I let you get out of here without mentioning the Woodley Road Extension. So I'm thankful that we had a, a meeting today and our Board of Estimates and Design is moving forward. We appreciate that very much. You, I, I think I heard you say twenty-eight thousand employees or is it, is it twenty-eight?
Eighty thousand.
Okay, twenty, okay.
Eighty thousand that use the services to include retirees and family members.
Right. So off and on, I hear different things about some of our higher skilled contractors leaving and going to Huntsville. Is that factual, can you say?
I cannot say that any of our team has moved to Huntsville. There is, I expect growth in Huntsville.
Okay.
I think that'll be announced, some of the commands potentially moving there will be announced shortly. But no, I have not seen any of the, the poll. We lost our deputy is, is the, is the one during that we have, Ms. Liz Miranda.
Oh, yes.
Took the job at AMC Headquarters. But other than that, I'm not tracking any other employees going to Huntsville.
All right, well, thank you very much again for coming. I appreciate you taking the time and look forward to seeing you again. And please give my birthday wishes to Monique for tomorrow as well.
Thanks, Pat.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our Fiscal Year Twenty-Six Citizen Budget Advisory Report. Mr. Parrish. Anybody else coming?
All right, just me. Well, good evening, Council President Vinceni. Happy birthday tomorrow. Members of the County Council, I do want to acknowledge some of the Citizens Budget Advisory members that are here tonight with me, even though they're not coming up front. No, no, you're fine. Tori Lynch is here, she was representing District A. Stacy Stover was District E. Mr. Robert Tibbs, District D. And then we also had Eric Robert, Randy Packet, and Kevin McKinney. And I apologize to them all. Earlier versions of this report had them all listed at the top in a, in a nice letterhead. It was very pretty and somewhere along the line, I must have deleted that letterhead, so I apologize for that. I assure you that I, I did not do that on purpose and I do mean to recognize all of their, their submissions to this report. And we do, again, thank you for the opportunity to submit this report. The members of the Citizens Budget Advisory Board are proud to have been appointed for Fiscal Year Twenty-Six. We feel it's important for the citizens of Hartford County to know that we are a board consisting of many different backgrounds, all with knowledge, familiarity, and understanding of the county budgeting process. Our members are experienced in real estate, agriculture, education, emergency services, government, business, banking, accounting, and finance. The county is tasked with significant fiscal Twenty-Six budget challenges, which include rising energy and healthcare costs, as well as a state-mandated shift of over six million dollars in additional costs onto our local budget. Additionally, a federally projected reduction in workforce could heavily impact this county as so much of our economic development is focused on Aberdeen Proving Ground and the contracts associated with the Department of Defense, which we just heard so much about from the Major General. There's a nationwide fear of a potential recession as tariffs disrupt global trade that will increase costs for consumers and businesses and ultimately slow down economic growth. Revenue is projected to continue to increase in a conservative rate based on the Spending Affordability Report. With continued strong property tax performance, the county has no change in tax rates for FY Twenty-Six. Together, we listened to four days of testimony from the various department heads and met in private to discuss the various matters relating to the FY Twenty-Six budget. During those discussions, we created this report, which we present to you this evening. We anticipate that you will take into consideration our thoughts as you move along in the budget process. We want to acknowledge the funding of a three percent COLA and one thousand dollar merit increase for employees of Hartford County Government, up from a one percent COLA and one thousand dollar merit increase last year, as well as providing the necessary funding for both the library and the health department to fund three percent salary increases in their respective institutions. Hartford County Government employees have received a pay increase the first two years of this administration, despite the fact that the county executive declared that there is a structural deficit. In the private sector, if a business is struggling and not profitable, then employees typically don't get a pay increase. Three percent COLA is higher than the federal COLA of two and a half percent. And with the one thousand dollar merit increase, many employees will see a four to five percent increase overall. We question how this is affordable when the county executive challenges other organizations to tighten their belts while not meeting other funding requests. It was also indicated that the intention was to provide enough funding to meet the sheriff's salary study. However, testimony from the sheriff's office concluded that the amount provided would fall short. The state's attorney also expressed concern that funds were only provided to increase salaries for attorneys at that office and not any of the support staff, which does not seem adequate. Working with the Board of Education to provide funding for their operating request is also something that should be acknowledged. As an advisory board, we would caution against saying the Board of Education has been fully funded, though. The Board of Education took proactive measures by decreasing their budget requests preemptively through a reduction in workforce. Many student-facing positions are to be eliminated at the end of this school year and nothing has shown that class sizes have been decreasing in size. Additionally, using a substantial amount of the Board of Education's fund balance this year and projecting to still need to use fund balance next year is unsustainable. Balancing enrollment is a must, especially since there is no plan in place to get teacher salaries to sixty thousand dollars per year as required by the COVID Commission. The importance of education is noted for our community college system as well. And although the college will manage with their funding for now, HCC will need to increase its tuition, most likely in part to the substantial capital project proposed for a workforce training facility. Councilman Bennett rightfully brought it to everyone's attention that every one hundred thousand dollar invested reduces the tuition by one dollar per credit hour. Considering the amount of collaboration the college has with Hartford County Public Schools offering dual enrollment, investing in our workforce training, and providing degree and non-degree educational program for everyone in our community, it seems like a reasonable request to invest enough to keep tuition rates where they are currently, if at all possible. Again, this year, this board is concerned about the lack of significant growth of economic development in the county. The Office of Economic Development lacks a coherent strategy for the future and has not provided any evidence of growing the economy over the last several years, despite increased spending within the department. Tourism in particular is a major concern of this advisory board, as it was only briefly discussed despite it being such an important part of our local economy. The administration has already disregarded legislation approved through multiple council mandates in regard to how tourism funds should be distributed. There is nothing leading us to believe any major changes to that stance are forthcoming. The county needs to come up with a long-term plan to pay for stormwater management improvements. Currently, one-sixth of the recordation fee goes to pay for those improvements. However, this year's budget requires using an additional one million dollars of general funds. The need to defend multiple lawsuits seems to have led to an inflated law department budget as well, funding both in-house and outside council. Incidentally, the funding for the county's law office has nearly doubled over the past few years from one point nine million dollars in FY Twenty-three to a proposed three point six million dollars for FY Twenty-six. We were happy to, very happy to hear that the Welcome One Shelter is set to expand using federal grant dollars, but not having a plan in place for homeless services next winter is still an issue. Some funds are in the budget, but there is no vendor selected, no plan for how to handle families or individuals that look to the county for support during cold weather situations. In general, the use of funding placeholders when so many other areas of the budget are in need of funding is a concern of this advisory board. We think you should consider reducing the capital program put, put forth by the administration. Capital spending has increased from six hundred and twenty-nine million in twenty-twenty-one to one point two-six billion this year. We applaud the continued investment in the Choppetown Community Center with a location set and fields and trails to be built. But the only real immediate land purchase in the very near future needed is for a school to be built in the Havity Grace to Aberdeen area. As such, having ten million dollars set aside for potential site acquisition is more than likely higher than necessary. In the future years, large expenditures like a public safety complex and regional workforce training center need to have commitments for investment from our state and/or federal partners to be possibly considered. It is important for the citizens to have a say in this process and the county budget. I would like to thank you, the members of the council, for allowing us to serve this year in our current capacity. You certainly made and still make us feel welcomed. We will continue to be of service as you complete the amendment and voting process. And I am available to take any questions that you may have, as are my fellow members.
Len, let me thank you and your colleagues for this report that you produced for us this evening. I want to thank you personally for serving as my budget advisor. And I want to thank all of you for taking the time to be with us so many days out of your regular schedule. So we appreciate that. And with that, I'll open it up to any council members that have any questions or comments. Mr. Bennett.
Hello. Just want to thank you and everybody who volunteered through this process. Again, the four days of drama and intrigue and, and lots of note-taking. I don't go unnoticed, but I know from Kevin, my budget advisor, it's also the phone calls in the evening, the meetings afterwards, the emails back and forth as we go through thousands of pages of numbers to try and figure out what it all means. And it's volunteer work for you all. I get a paycheck every two weeks, but you don't. So thank you for all the work that you do to make that possible, especially this year with having such a new budget team. You wouldn't guess it by his young age, but Mr. Tibbs was the most senior one there, having been through multiple budget processes. So again, just thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Mr. Riley.
Yes, I, Len, I also want to thank you and your colleagues and Mr. Tibbs for serving as my, my council. I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Ms. Imhoff.
I just want to give a shout-out to you guys. I was appointed on the twenty-second, we rolled into the budget on the twenty-third, and you, you guys made it a lot easier on me and answered any of the questions that I had. And special shout-out to my budget advisor, Eric, who's not here tonight, but, uh... And special shout out to my budget advisor, Eric, who's not here tonight, but he made it a lot easier through the process, and thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Len, thank you for the report, and we'll be talking soon. Thank you. Thank you all. Agenda item number seven, approval of minutes, legislative date 25-016, May 13, 2025. Fiscal year '26 budget public hearing, May 15, 2025. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections to the minutes, stand approved. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read Resolution 01225 into the record for introduction.
Resolution 012-25, council support fiscal year '26 budget funding request as introduced by Council President Vincenney, Councilmember Robert, Councilmember Emhoff, Councilmember Jan Giordano, Councilmember Boyle Sodles, Councilmember Bennett. A resolution of the County Council of Hartford County to support funding requests for the fiscal year 2026 budget encourages amendments to the annual budget and appropriation ordinance bill number 25-005 to fund said requests.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. This is a follow-up on a letter that we developed this past week, and in talking with individual council members, they wanted their names on this as well. So in order to do that, we had to bring this resolution forward, so we will be voting on this tonight. May I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve Resolution 12-25.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Emhoff. It's been moved in a second to approve Resolution 01225. Is there any discussion? Mr. Riley?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. First, we, it's one and all, so if you vote for this resolution, you're saying you want all these requests. We're asking the county executive, we're not doing these item by item, correct?
That's correct.
So it's all or none?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'd just like to, when we talk about adding this to our budget, have we decided, or the folks that put this in there, where we're going to make the cuts?
We are working on that as we speak.
So that won't be in part of this resolution?
It will not.
So we're going to vote blindly that we're going to make cuts that we don't know about, because we might not agree with the cuts, but yet we might agree with some of the expenditures here?
I think that there's been enough discussion amongst individual council members that there's been areas that have been set aside and for savings, that if the county executive decides to fund these, he has the funds to do it. That's correct.
Okay, but we're not going to discuss tonight what those, where those cuts are?
No, sir.
But that will happen in the future?
Yes.
From this day, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll have to be discussed in an open session, obviously.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
And just for public consumption, our recommended changes to the budget this year are $240,000 for the state's attorney's office to help with paying their lowest-paid staff, to get them up to pay parity across other jurisdictions, $600,000 to help with court security with sheriff deputies, because that was identified safety concern, $1.1 million to replace expired equipment for the sheriff's office, again, for safety, both of the officers and of the people that they serve in our community, and then $200,000 for the community college to help meet them in the middle between their funding request and what they're actually receiving, so that they don't get flat-funded for the third year in a row. So the total requests from us for amendments is $2.1 million, which I believe last year we collectively put forward over $10 million of proposed amendments to the budget. So in comparison, this is a really mild ask of our county executive compared to what's come from us before.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
No.
Mrs. Will Sodle?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, one negative, one absent, Resolution 01225 is hereby approved. Nine, introduction of bills we have known. Ten, introduction and consideration of amendments. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read amendments one through 11 to Bill 25005.
Amendments one? Amendments one through 11 to Bill 25-005, Annual Budget Appropriation Ordinance, introduced by Council President Vincenney at the request of the county executive. Amendment one on page 25 and line 14, strike, $18,675,000 and substitute $18 million. Amendment two on page 25 and line 15, strike, $2,900,000 and substitute $2,650,000. Amendment number three on page 25 and line 17, strike, $5,670,000 and substitute $5,550,000. Amendment number four on page 25 and line?
Substitute $5,500,000, not $550,000.
On page three, on page 25? You want me to read it again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Read amendment number three.
On page 25 and line 17, strike, $5,670,000 and substitute $5,550,000.
No. It's just $5. It's $5,500,000 is being substituted.
$5,500,000.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Amendment four on page 25 and line 20, strike, $3,135,000 and substitute $3,500,000. Yeah. Amendment number five on page 25 and line 21, strike, $30,150,000 and substitute $28,150,000. Amendment number six on page 26 and line 21, strike, $239,600 and substitute $219,600. Amendment number seven on page 27 and line 17, strike, $27,67,338 and substitute $23,867,338. Amendment number eight on page 43 and line three, strike, $15,400,000 and substitute $13,800,000. Amendment number nine on page 43 and line 15, strike, $2,750,000 and substitute $1,150,000. Amendment number 10 on page 44 and line three, strike, $9,861,188 and substitute $8,261,188. On page 11, on page 44, and line 14, strike, $1,600,000 and substitute zero.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Robbie, Mr. Sandless, Mr. Lloyd, I know you guys have some explanations.
So, just as a reminder, all of these bills, I'm sorry, all of these amendments here have to do with the water and sewer system. The water and sewer system is an enterprise fund, meaning that all of the revenues that are collected from the water and sewer revenue are collected from the users of the system, and they are used to pay for the operating costs of the system. So actually, both the operating costs and kind of the capital replenishment costs. So I know we do have some new council members here, so they may not have been here for the past couple of months. But for the last 10 years, the county has engaged in a five-year rate study where we have procured the services of outside consultants to try to align what our rate should be that we expect from the water and sewer users in order to pay for all of the operational and capital replenishment costs. And we implemented these in 2016 and again in 2020. We recently completed a study with the expectation of doing rates for fiscal years '26 through '30. However, this was a very kind of tumultuous time with a lot of changes happening at the state level, increased taxes, the change in tariffs, some of the other stuff, with a lot of just economic uncertainty. And it was more or less kind of a joint consensus from both the county executive and the county council that at this time, it was not appropriate to enact any type of rate increases. Now, the budget was already developed kind of with expectation of those rate increases. So what we're doing here is reducing, or rolling back, I say, the revenue increases of those rate increases, and more or less kind of bringing back the revenue expectations to where they are in the current year. And that amount is $3.2 million. And then in order to not only reduce the revenue by $3.2 million, we also then need to reduce expenditures. Now, again, on the operating side, again, we are completely fine. The rates are sufficient to maintain all the current operations, so the current staffing, we'll be able to use all of the proper amounts of chemicals and all of that on the water. But what will take at least a hit or at least a pushback will be some of our capital replenishment. So there are two capital projects here in question that we are asking for amendments to be reduced. The first one is the renewal and replacement of water infrastructure by $1.6 million, and then also the sod-run facility improvements by approximately $1.6 million. Both of these are ongoing capital replenishment projects. In both cases, they have kind of long trajectories, and we're able to kind of push out some of these expenditures. In the case of the renewal and replacement water infrastructure, I know we are still working on some easements, so we probably wouldn't necessarily have been able to spend those funds immediately anyway, so we're kind of pushing those off into a future year. And then the same is true with sod-run facilities. We still have enough ample balances there to continue our design work and continue these improvements. Now, I should note, we will need at some point to address the rate question because we do have an aging system, and just like with a house or anything else, you have to renew and replace your infrastructure so that you are able to maintain it. However, again, in the current environment, we do have the ability to not go forward with those rate increases at this time, but of course, those do require some budget changes. So that's where we are.
So basically, we were planning on raising our water and sewer rates and having that fund, those new funds in the budget accounted for. We pulled that back, that's not happening. So you're making adjustments in both the revenue side and the expense side?
Exactly. We have a balanced budget, so whatever we bring in, we also then generally have expenditures that offset it. So in this case, correct, we are both reducing the revenue, because we are not going to realize those revenues, and we are reducing the expenditures, in this case, in the capital budget.
But at this time, it's not going to impact anything that we need to do for the water and sewer fund as far as capital projects, because we're sitting on nearly a quarter of a billion-dollar reserve.
Well, we have enough.
We have a $99 million, according to you.
Yes, correct. We have.
Unrestricted fund balance and $130 million restricted.
We have adequate reserves that in the short term, we can afford this. However, if you were to go back 10 years ago, we did not have those types of reserves.
I know, I was here, I understand.
Not everyone was.
I understand that.
And yes, so we do have adequate reserves that we can, for a year or so, maintain this. But again, eventually, just like with a home or with anything else, you generally have to do that.
And that's understood. I totally understand, but I just want to make sure that everyone understands that we're in a position to do whatever we need to do, and when we need to adjust prices, we will.
Our current operations are not going to suffer, and I believe, again, in consultation with the deputy director of Water and Sewer, that are, like with anything, of course, we triage the expenditures. These were at the lowest priority, and so we're pushing them out. And we believe that, yes, we can handle this. Obviously, we also have adequate reserves that if any emergencies were to come up, we are in a position to handle this.
That's basically what I wanted to hear. That's what I'm saying, yes. Thank you. Council, anyone else with questions? Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Good to be with you. A few quick questions. With this and future adjustments, are you thinking that we'll take the five-year plan and make it a four-year plan to get us back on schedule? Or are you thinking that the five-year plan will just be a year delayed? Like, how are you thinking about addressing the fact we took a pause this year?
And I think that's going to, to be determined. I think there's going to probably continue to be economic uncertainties out there for the foreseeable future. We just heard the commanders from APG talk about the force reduction. Every day, you turn on the news, you hear about different types of economic challenges. We have enough reserves that we can, I think, weather this for a few years. It has not been determined at this point if we're going to bring back that legislation next year or the year after. Again, what we don't want to have happen is what happened 20 years ago, whereby we didn't come back for decades, and we found ourselves in a very bad situation. So we have the adequate reserves, we're aware of the situation. I think we're in a position to kind of maintain this for a couple of years, but again, all of that is to be determined. We definitely do not, though, as a county, I think, want to go in any long-term, multiple year type of, find ourselves in a five-year push-off.
Thank you for that. And then, since we're just talking about capital project expenditures, I just wanted to ask while you're in front of us, because since the last time we saw you in person, Maryland and the United States lost their AAA bond rating. We still got ours.
We have ours.
Does that make our AAA bond rating more valuable when others lose theirs? As far, like, how will that impact us when it comes to capital projects and their costs?
Well, I mean, again, during the times when the rates were very low, two, three, four years ago, even counties that were single-way counties were getting really good rates, just very similar to how people with low credit ratings in 2020 might have gotten a mortgage that is far better than somebody who has an 800 credit rating would get now. However, our bonds are competitively bid, and so to that extent, ours are going to be, I think, the most desirable from the investment community. Part of it also is, I think, we tend to go to market at a really good time in the winter, and so we've looked at that from kind of an analytical standpoint, working with our financial advisors. I think that that's very advantageous. Not all counties have that ability, or they may have certain cash flow needs. We have enough reserves that we can also determine when we want to go to bond market. Some people have to go to bond market because they need the money, so we're fortunate there. So again, relatively speaking, I think we're in a better situation, but that's also because we, as a county, have been willing to make hard decisions in a whole lot of areas, which is why we have that AAA bond rating. And some might say that's maybe not why the state of Maryland or the federal government has their AAA bond rating anymore, it's because maybe they have not made those same types of hard decisions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Mr. Jan Giordano?
Thanks, Robbie. So I heard you say it's all coming out of the capital fund. So next year, will you look at the capital projects and maybe pare them down? I don't remember all the different capital projects you had, other than, what was the total cost of the capital projects you reduced by?
Well, in this case, by the 3.2 million.
3.2 million.
And again, these are just on the water and sewer side, so any of the other capital projects that are funded with taxpayer dollars are not affected under any of these amendments.
Right. So I'm just saying, come next year, you've reduced it by 3.2 million for the capital projects. Will you look at maybe a smaller capital project? Or are you just going to look at the same capital project and work on that? Has there been any discussion on that?
Yeah, I know, I think that we will, and some of this will depend on whether or not we were to come back next year with the rate legislation or defer it for another year or what have you. Because what we're looking at is, okay, this is how much available funds we have in water and sewer, because there's no outside funds. We're not able to, we're not using any taxpayer dollars or any grants or anything like that. It's all pretty much generated from the system and the reserves that we have in place. And we could certainly go, and we have enough reserves that we could just put a whole bunch into capital, but then, do we cut ourselves short and then not have enough reserves in case we were to go several years without being able to do the rate increase? So I do think, as a general tone, we are probably going to be smoothing out the capital projects and probably reducing capital expenditures. Again, still maintaining the most critical needs, but those items that are like, okay, this was seventh on the priority, instead of being able to do it next year, maybe it's done the year after, the year after.
Okay, that's what I was looking to hear. Thank you.
Anyone else? So Robbie, I agree, we'll be looking at this. We do not want to fall in that same category as we did before, but I think with everything that our citizens have on them, this was not the time. And we will bring these amendments up for a vote next week so that you know where we're going. Okay? All right, thank you. 11, call for final ruling of bills, we have none. 12, enrollment of bills, none. 13, unfinished business, none. 14, Hartford Community College fiscal year '25 transfer request. We have Ms. Jackson with us this evening. If you want to come forward, please, from Hartford Community College to present. And this is something that we do on an annual basis.
Correct. So, good evening, and thank you for your attention to this administrative issue. As you know, our budget comes before you each year for approval. We are responsible for the program areas and the budget within that area, and we can't spend above that amount. You know, sometimes things change within the year, and they don't go exactly as planned, so we keep a close eye on it and monitor as we go. And sometimes at the end of the year, we have to make slight tweaks here and there. So this is. we have to make slight tweaks here and there. So, this is what is before you this evening. As you can see, we've had some excessive expenditures in the plant operation and maintenance area. Of course, everybody has seen the increase in utilities across the board, so that has affected us even with our cost-cutting measures. And this winter was a little bit heavier than our preceding winters. So, again, where you kind of get used to those light ones, and then when you get a bigger, bigger one, it, you know, you have to backfill a little bit. We are also looking to move some money around to cover our cost of the dual enrollment waiver, the 25% that the college is covering. And we are also looking to put some additional scholarship money aside for our summer momentum scholarship that will help students this summer. Our plan is to, again, to encourage retention, keep them enrolled, give them money to take classes through the summer so they'll be more inclined to return to us in the fall.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. And, and, you know, looking from fiscal year 24's request to this, we're not talking that much money, so.
No.
Counsel, anyone have any questions? Mr. Riley?
On an unrelated subject, do you know your fund balance for the college?
Um, not off the top of my head. We do have a couple of different categories, just like the county does. We have unrestricted, and then we have investment in plant.
Could you give me those?
Uh, yes, we could send them over to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
Thank you for everything that you do. Can you speak a little bit to the increase in dual enrollment that you spoke about in your letter? You know, how many students do you have that are dual-enrolled and, and how that impacts you all financially?
So, I don't know the exact number. It has grown significantly. So, the first year of the dual enrollment program, it was capped, and then the cap was removed. So, again, as, you know, as familiarity with the program kind of took, took growth, took wings and started to grow and, and from, you know, you have one kid that goes through it, and then they talk to another parent, another parent, and you see how it kind of takes its own wings and the momentum grows. So, under the current agreement, the Board of Education picks up 75% of the cost, and again, it's, full tuition is covered for, again, and unli, right now, it's unlimited, well, for this was the year, it was unlimited number of classes that students could take. The public schools pick up 75%, and we pick up 25%. So, right now, that cost is right around $500,000 for the year, five to 600. We're going to probably top out.
So, if tuition rates were to go up by an extra dollar per credit hour, that costs you with dual enrollment an extra 25 cents, and it costs the school sys, the public school system an extra 75 cents per credit hour?
Yes, yes.
Um, that's good to know. But I also just think it's worth celebrating that on Thursday, there's going to be high schoolers who get their associate's degree before they get their high school diploma, which is really.
Yes, that is the, the great work that's being done at Joppetown and the ETEC program. I mean, how, just, what an opportunity to get those both knocked out at the same time.
Thank you all.
And along those lines, I mean, we were just at the ribbon cutting for the new cybersecurity lab, along with the Secretary of Higher Education, Secretary of Commerce, the CEO of the partner that was working with the Hartford Community College, the county executive, myself. Just an outstanding program, and the results, the kids that spoke to us were just phenomenal. And I just want to congratulate you on all of the things that you're doing to promote higher education at the college and to create an opportunity for workforce development where our kids have an opportunity right away for higher-paying jobs. So, I know that's what we're all striving for, and just want to congratulate you and thank you for that effort as well. Counsel, this is a, this is an item we're going to be moving on tonight. So, may I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve the tw, fiscal year 2025 budget transfer request.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve the request. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Emhoff?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Will Sodell?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, the fiscal year 25 budget transfer request is hereby approved. You're welcome. Agenda number seventeen, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President, there is no one signed up this evening.
Thank you. Sixteen, business from council members. Ms. Emhoff?
So, as the end of the school year is quickly approaching, there's definitely been uptake in social events. Last week, Amanda Hickman and the Humane Society came out to meet with Council President Vincenti and, and Council Member Will Sodells and I. The Humane Society is scheduled to present before the council next Tuesday, May 27th. Last Friday, some of the council team met with Harf, Harvest Chapel Mission to discuss some future ideas to help homeless people get housed. Their vision is definitely years into the future, but it was a great concept that they are presenting, and we're working to get them connected with Hartford Community Action Agency and Hartford Family House. This past weekend, I had the privilege to attend the Magic of Science Fair and Family Festival up at the Tune Center. It was the first time taking my girls, and it was a lot of fun. The Commission for Women is holding their open monthly meetings. This, yesterday, Sean Cross, the president and CEO of the ARC, came and presented. The next open meeting is June 23rd. For Memorial Day, I'd like to wish everyone a meaningful and reflective Memorial Day as we take the time to remember, honor, and give thanks to all who have served and sacrificed for our freedom. And just as a reminder, the Hartford County Sheriff's Office Citizens Police Academy graduation is occurring on May 28th. For anyone looking to have a better understanding of Hartford County Sheriff's Office's operations, it's a great opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Emhoff. Mr. Janjordano?
Good evening, Council President. So, Wednesday, attended the Economic Development Advisory Board Meeting. So, it's a pretty good meeting, just trying to find out a lot of what's going on in the county. On Thursday, attended the ECDC meeting with the Town of Bel Air. They spoke about the plans for the Hartford Mall, so we did ask a lot of questions about that. You know, some organic grocery store on one end, still looks like Amazon Fresh coming on the other end. I'd like to see condos, not apartments, but I don't know if that can be changed. I'd rather have people with roots there, so. On Sunday, they had the, the town derby on Main Street. I think they had like 22 vehicles. Bel Air Volunteer Fire Department was first, Independent Brewery was second, and Harko Credit Union was third. Well-attended, great, great thing for a lot of young kids, families. They had the road closed down, I think, until about 1:00, and then traffic was gone, but there was lots of crowds, pit, pits were loaded with people. And so, the weather held out, so it was really great. And no incidents, as far as I know. So, every Saturday morning from 8:00 to 12:00 is the farmer's market, Mary Risto parking lot, so you could find produce, meats, baked goods, flowers, crafts, pizza truck, pretty much, you know, all kind of stuff there, some gluten-free bread, just a little bit of everything. Later on in the year, they'll have vegetables for sale and everything. I'm looking for the string beans from Bogarty Farms. They're, they're probably the best that I've had, and they, they know I'm coming. I always get a big container of that. So, the Beller Flea Market's upcoming on Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00 at the Mary Risto parking lot. And then, obviously, high school commencements begin this week, and I want to wish Council President Vincenti a happy birthday. I won't say how old he is, but he's older than all of us, so.
Forty-one, forty-one.
So, everybody have a good memorial. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Mr. Riley?
Yes, happy birthday to you, President.
Thank you, sir.
And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Sodells?
I'm going to reserve my comments. I'm trying to save my voice tonight. Thank you, though.
Mr. Bennett?
Hello, good to be with everyone. I also want to take a moment to honor Memorial Day coming up this weekend. I hope it's a time of reflection and remembrance for the community. I also want to recognize that it's graduation season. I'll be presenting citations to the TAM graduates this Wednesday night for Teacher Academy of Maryland. It's one of our magnet programs we have in the county, celebrating those high schoolers who have been working on their associate's degree in teaching, in student teaching classrooms in our county on their hard work throughout high school. Then, Thursday, I'll be at HTC's graduations, celebrating our graduates from the community college. And then, Friday is Edgewood High School's graduation. And I know my wife is very excited to see her students walk across the stage at Edgewood High School. So, you know, I know we're all going to be at a million graduations within the next two weeks, and it's just so, so fun to be able to celebrate the community in that way. And then, lastly, I just wanted to celebrate that we swore in a new city council last night in the City of Havity Grace with two returning members and one new member, Mr. Ellis, and I'm just really excited to see what they continue to do. City of Havity Grace has a good relationship with the county. I'm very lucky to live in the City of Havity Grace, where we now have wide sidewalks that are flat and not bumpy. And with that, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. So, fifteen, business from the president. I need to announce an adequate Public Facilities Advisory Board Meeting Wednesday, June 4th at 6:00 PM in the Council Multipurpose Room. And then, as far as events, I was honored and fortunate to have dinner with Major General and the Sergeant Major, their spouses, another general, Major General, and County Executive Casely and Debbie Casely. So, it was a very nice evening at Quarters One. And then, also, went to, on Sunday, the Hartford County Public Libraries Foundation's Taste of Hartford.
Oh, yeah.
Was absolutely amazing. I don't know how many people they had, but that place was packed. So, it was a great event. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.